All right. Everybody, I guess we're on. Guys, we're starting. This is the planning board meeting for October 20th. And the first agenda item is a public hearing for Mr. Welch, Mr. and Mrs. Welch, who want to make an addition to their existing home on East Sand Pond Road. And I hope I'm not going to start coughing here. So if you'd like to come up to the microphone, oh, there is, oh yeah, there is a microphone there. And just give everybody an overview of what it is you're doing, like you did with us today.
Okay. My name's Ray Welch. We just bought the property over to East Sand Pond Road. When we bought the property, it was pretty much a studio apartment. It was pretty much four-wall standing. So we just kind of wanted to take it from a camp to a home. This is going to be our primary residence. There's currently one bathroom in the house. We would like to do a master bedroom addition, a 20 by 20 addition to the side of the camp. And then add a bathroom, master bedroom, a closet in that section. We would also like to bump the front of the camp towards the road about eight foot to accommodate a hallway, to accommodate hallway, like a breezeway, like an entryway, and washer and dryer area. Our camp currently sits back 110 foot from the high watermark. There was, a long time ago, before we had bought the camp, there was a deck on the backside of the property, lakeside. We would like to bring that deck back. So if we were able to get 10 foot of deck space back, that would bring us to that exact 100-foot mark. Moving on to the garage, we would like to get a, we would like to do a full addition on top of the garage, do a second floor on top of the garage, and then do two open carports on either side. Anywhere between 10 and 12 foot wide, we're kind of unsure, depending on what we would like to use the space for. Above that garage space is going to be an office for myself and my wife. We both work from home occasionally. So that is going to be that space, and eventually a recreational room for like a pool table or something like that. So that's kind of what we'd like to do with the space.
Put in a bath, don't they, correct?
Correct, yep.
Be a half bath?
Um, we had, we had originally said a full bath, but we're unsure of really what we can do. And the only reason why we were saying a full bath was in case we had extra guests to take a shower over there. It was never to accommodate anybody. It was more or less to any kind of overflow of company, I'd say. But obviously, if it's not allotted, we're not opposed to leaving it, the half bath, we're okay with that, too, so.
Since this is a public hearing, I'm going to ask if anyone out there has any questions or concerns. Bonnie?
Hello, public hearing, thank you. I'm a member of the public, Bonnie Lord Loughlin. I live on Cape Road. I had the pleasure of being able to go over to the sidewalk, and I want to thank the planning board for advertising that in the shopping guide, as you did this time. That made it easy for those of us who might want to come. And I just had two things I'd like to just learn about. I think Mr. Welch, when we met with him, showed me anyway sensitivity to the erosion needs of lakeside, of shoreland properties. He knows that there's a beautiful oak tree there that might have to come down. I think he and Aaron both sort of wished it didn't have to come down, but it might. And I believe Craig advised him that planting another one might be a good idea. I also just noticed, but I forgot to ask them at the time, there are trees down closer, much closer to the, to the lake down there? And you all are aware of that, those not being?
We plan on leaving.
They're not?
Please talk into the mic.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that they didn't have plans to cut down those trees. They are very close to the shoreline, and he just assured me. And the second thing I wanted to bring up is, as I was about to go in today, I was kind of stuck at the top of the road there because the signage said private road, and it said trespassers would be, violators would be prosecuted.
On East Sand Pond Road.
Right. And I didn't know my way down that road. Pardon me?
There's no sign indicating that it is East Sand Pond Road.
There's no sign that says East Sand Pond Road, but I, I knew I was at the site. It's just that there were three signs that made sure that anybody coming knew that trespassers were not to come. So I just wanted to hear two things. I wanted to hear what the Welch's thought when they bought that property, and they knew that they were going to, to a setting, buy a property on a road that had those warnings. And then I'd like to hear from the planning board what that, what the significance of those signs is.
Well, the, it's, I believe, but please correct me if I'm wrong, that East Sand Pond Road is a private road, and it's maintained by the residents who live there. And is it an association or not?
Could you talk in the mic?
It's not an association. It's kind of an agreed upon by all the residents there. So like maintenance, all that stuff is kind of disagreed.
So since it's not a town road and not town-maintained, if they want to put that signage up, they certainly have the right, I believe they have the right to do it.
The sign was up well before us. I'm not really sure why or who put it up, but I'm not taking it down. So some, if somebody else wants to, then they can. As far as the tree goes, yes, we are kind of partial to the tree because it is a beautiful tree, and we do love it. Great idea today to replant a tree, and we are looking at, we will definitely look at other options and one, if not more, trees on the property. We definitely would, would definitely love to bring that tree back, you know, at some point, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So again, I just want to be educated about the significance of when those of us who don't live on a road, but are warned before we go there that trespassers are not allowed. Are we trespassers, then, as citizens of Leamington who are looking?
I don't know the answer to that, Bonnie. I honestly don't. I'm just assuming that because it is a private road, like I said, they can put the sign up. I doubt with us having a lack of police force in town and common sense being used, I don't think we're going to get arrested if we drive down. If you go to visit someone there, I don't know the history of why that sign went up. Does anybody know? Yes.
I've got a little bit of history on that. Apparently, some years back, a camp had got robbed. So I think they're trying to limit to just the residents and company of the residents versus, because at one point, that road used to go all the way around Sand Pond, but they cut it off. Because I guess the person that robbed the house went all the way around the circle. So what they did is they cut the road off so that could never flow through anymore. So I think maybe to kind of just ward certain people away, I think that's kind of the nature of that sign. But that's just me assuming, though, too.
Well, I'm sure you're probably right. You have better knowledge than we do.
Just by chatter on the road, that's kind of, that's what we, what we got on us, so.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? There is no answer, Bonnie. I don't know. I don't know who you can go to, to be very honest with you.
It's a reasonable question for the planning board, though, isn't it?
No, it's a private road.
But what is, what is the significance of a private road?
Owned by the citizens.
It's maintained by the citizens. The town does not plow it. They don't grade it, they don't sand it, they don't do whatever. And therefore, we don't have control over it. If they were to come to the town meeting and ask that it be accepted as a town road, then it would have to be paved and brought up to standard. And then the town could say, you can't put the sign there. But other than that, there's nothing we can do.
So it really has to do with the road being private. But it says trespassers will be prosecuted. So what would?
Well, Bonnie, I think the definition of trespassers are people that don't belong there and are not invited. And we belong there, and we had been invited to be there. So I think if you look at the definition, we are not trespassing because we had been invited. It's the same when people put no trespassing on their land. Trespassing means being there without approval of the owner.
I hear you there. So a road, a whole road can, can do that.
If the association of the residents want it, because they're the one who pay to take care of it.
And when that sign was put up, which is probably 50 years ago, it's?
Bonnie, let's look at it in a different way. If they wanted to, they can put a gate right at the top of that road and hire someone.
Really? Because it's private?
And they can say, do you live down there? And say, nope. Then you say, then you're not coming in. They have a real right to do that.
Really?
It's their land, it's their road.
Okey-dokey. And they, they plow it, then?
They plow it. Yep, town has nothing to do with it.
And so, okay, so I appreciate explaining this with you. I just?
You'd have to be warned once, anyway. No trespass.
Do you?
They'd have to warn you once, before they find you or whatever.
Are we warned, though, by seeing the sign?
Well, you know, this is not something we have control over. We have a really heavy agenda tonight, so it's not pertaining specifically to Mr. Welch's land, so I'm going to suggest that we move on, because we don't have any other?
I appreciate you giving me a little slack about this, because this is a public hearing, and it's a reasonable time to take a couple of minutes on this question. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any concerns? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And does anyone on the planning board have any comments or concerns about? I thought we had an excellent sidewalk today. It was very well explained. It's obviously, the developer, Mr. Welch, has taken into consideration zoning ordinance and limitations, being in shoreland, so I don't see that we have any?
I just have one question. You want to do this garage upstairs the way it's drawn, right? Because we just had a problem with another one.
Correct.
Okay, so this is what we're voting on. He wants to do it that way, and he can.
Okay. Anything else? All right, let's go through, what we're going to do now, Mr. Welch, is we have a section on conditional use permits, and we go down through a series of, some page 52 of our ordinance. Oh, well, yeah, well, that's what we're going to do. We've got to go down through the conditions. This is a public hearing. No, no, we go.
Fifty-five in my book.
Well, it's? Hold on. Standards are 55. Right, thank you, Donna. Yep. So we'll do the usual, it's a 6G, standards applicable to conditional uses. We'll go down through A through L. And if I go through them fairly quickly, if I go too fast and any board member wants to stop me because I don't say the right thing, please do. The first one, A, the use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies. Yes, it will. B, traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance, and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in the ordinance. That's not applicable, that's more if a small, like a shopping center or a store or something comes in, not applicable. The site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations. Yes. D, adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made, and it will be. I'm assuming when you do your construction, you'll have, whoever does it will take away the building, excess building supplies, et cetera, et cetera. Okay. E, adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. It's not applicable. F, a stormwater drainage system meeting state standards shall be installed. Not applicable. G, adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made, and they will be made when you do the construction. Are you doing the construction yourself, or have you? So you will put up the requisite barriers to ensure that there's no runoff down into the pond? The DEP barriers, okay. Thanks. So that, that will be met. H, there is adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes. Yes, there is. I, the provisions for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties, including public areas from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, adverse visual impact, and the like. It's really not applicable, that's more to a business coming in. J, all performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met. Yes. K, the use will not result in unsafe or unhelpful conditions. Correct, it will not. L, the use will not have an adverse impact on natural beauty, historic sites, or rare and irreplaceable natural areas. That is correct. They're going to replace the, the oak tree that probably will have to come down. So what we're going to do now is go through some conditions that will put on the notice of decision that will be sent to you. And one of them will be that you put up a DEP barrier. I'm going to go through my thoughts, and then the rest of the board can supplement what I've forgotten to put in. That the DEP barrier for soil erosion will be put in, that you will plant a replacement tree for the tree that's being taken down. The board needs to decide about the bath over the, over the garage. Right, it's the half bath, correct?
Well, no, he has a full bath, but I don't see anything wrong with it. What's the difference between a half bath?
Well, did you, Craig mentioned something today on the sidewalk, that if it's, if there's a shower in there, the septic system currently is adequate for the two bedrooms. Right now, they have one bedroom in the house?
This is not a bedroom.
Well, I know, but if there's somebody, if they have guests that are taking, or... The other thing is, do we want to put a condition in there that says? Do we want to put a condition? Guys, let's all stay on the same page here, please.
It's based on bedrooms versus?
Right, then you've got two bedrooms.
Correct, bedrooms bathrooms.
But, well, fine, that's why I asked. I don't have any problem myself, but?
And it's probably one of those bathrooms that was very rarely going to be used, but maybe for resale purpose, it would bring value to the property.
So is it, is the board, oh, you know, there's one thing. Please don't interrupt. I'm, I'm, had a bad day today, so my patience is not very, this is quite limited tonight. Before we go into further grace, would you sit in, please, for, for Victoria? She's not here tonight, thank you. Should have said that in the beginning. So we'll go with the full bath?
I do have one thing, though, about that space. I think as a condition, I have no problem with the bathroom at all, or using it for whatever they want, but I think there needs to be a condition to say that that cannot be permanent living quarters or rental space.
Right, I was going to mention it.
I'm 100% okay with that, because it'll never be.
Would the rest of the board agree with that? That there can be no residential living space above the garage?
You're going to heat the garage, is how you're going to, because you're going to have water up there.
The garage is already heated. Yeah, so we're just going to kind of maintain that, and then we're, we're just going to put a mini-split in on that, on that second floor, kind of supplemental heat.
Didn't I read somewhere, some time ago, that the, if you had a space like this, as long as you didn't put a closet in, was not considered a bit, a bit true.
I always thought it was a kitchen sink.
That closet thing is?
We've always gone by the closet thing, too. And this is just different towns that, you know, we do work for. We've always heard it was just the closet rule, but that's, I mean, every town is definitely different for that.
Do we have anything in our ordinance about it?
And let me tell you, this would not be an apartment unless it had a kitchen sink.
A kitchen, right. So I don't think the closet is an issue. Yeah. If you intend to put a closet.
There's no closet in there.
Right, any residential space, yeah.
Or for rent space, we're going to be fine. And he can do whatever he wants, you know, you can do an office or?
Sure.
Did he give a condition just now, Joyce?
Yeah, well, this is one of the things that we will?
Because I couldn't hear him. He needs to?
Yep, yep. So it is, there will be no residential space over the garage.
Another question. I didn't see the plans on that garage.
It's in the packet?
It is right in the packet.
Go and take a look here, if you want to take a look.
Does the roof extend over the carports?
No, the roof essentially just goes straight up, and then the carports kind of wing off of them.
Okay, so you're not increasing the footage, square footage of?
Not the roof, no.
Okay. Are there any other conditions that?
What do you give to that apartment, from the outside deck?
There, there's going to be a set of stairs on the backside. Yep.
Exterior?
Exterior.
Okay, so it's, so we're okaying the plan as presented? Any others?
Is that a seasonal camper, now?
Excuse me?
Is that a seasonal camp?
I think so, yeah. From what we've seen, and there's, there's a lot of temporary things in there that is set up to be shut down. When we did buy it, they did say that the lady was trying to stay there year-round, but it's really not set up for it. So eventually, we are going to have to put like a real well in there and things like that, so, I mean, she's got a lot of little temporary things, so.
You'll have to put in a heating system as well?
There's plenty of heating systems in there. That's one thing she didn't go, go short on, so. Yeah, we do have, we, we've just bought the, we have a mini-split for the upstairs and downstairs of the main floor, and a third one coming for the new addition. So we're going to primarily heat with that, and then also propane.
Any more questions?
So you're going to need a seasonal conversion permit for the septic system?
Okay.
What was it called, Craig?
Seasonal conversion permit.
What determines that?
Can you explain what that is, Craig?
Well, it makes it so that, you know, that you're staying in it just for the season, and now you're going to be living in it full time. So it changes like the dynamics of the septic system, because it's only six months a year around the season, and then maybe for four years, we'll need twelve months.
I mean, that, I mean, that accurate, that's just based on my opinion, and obviously the very limited information.
Well, I even said the design here, since local plumbing expects a signature permit is for seasonal conversion, so.
Okay.
So you work with Craig on that?
Okay, yep, absolutely.
Is there a septic design for that? Does he have a septic design?
Yeah, it's in the plan.
In the packet. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to approve Mr. and Mrs. Welch's plan for the addition to their house and garage, with the conditions as presented here?
Will we approve with, with the conditions that we discussed?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Grace, second. All in favor? Okay, you're set to go. I will write a notice of decision, probably, hopefully this week. I have 10 days to do it. I send it to you and the rest of, you know, we keep it on file here if Craig gets it, so all these conditions will be included in it when we write it, okay?
Okay.
But you have been approved to go forward now.
Excellent. So at this point, can I go ahead with my build permits, my, and all my other permitting?
Yep.
With Craig.
All right, very good. I'll get with you at some point, I'll come on in, get you some stuff. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is, Craig, is Ms. Snyder coming in tonight? What time? She was going to be at 7:30. Okay, well, she's on for 7:30, it's not quite 20. Folks, folks, I'm going to ask.
What's your gavel?
Excuse me, excuse me, folks, could you, could you go outside? I have to get my gavel out here, sorry about that.
My knuckles work.
Yeah, yeah. Can we do the minutes of October, no, of September 15? We're not going to do the October 6 meetings minutes tonight. I have mine. Thank you, Bonnie.
She's sending them over because there's somebody else.
All right, on the minutes? I think that's probably Snyder out there that's whacked by the door. On the minutes of September 15th, let me see what I've got here. On page three, the, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, it begins with Todd Goslin. Came forward, you have can forward. And then the last sentence, however, if there is an outbreak of certain insects, or if he cannot eliminate them, he uses mild presides, with pesticides, so just change that word to pesticides. On page four, in that paragraph that begins Eric Doobie, right under conditional use permit for Althea Lane. One, two, three, the third line up from the bottom, the third full sentence, starting with the word, location of the new cottage to be built. You've got an, you've got a torn be built, it's to be built. And then on that same page, under other? The second paragraph, one, two, three, fourth lined up. Fourth line down, the second sentence that begins with owner has secured security. It should be Pilot Cove LLC, because it's not, it's not Kyle who's secu, who's doing the security. It's the, he hired this Pilot Cove LLC.
So Pilot Cove LLC has secured, or that is the security company?
No, they aren't. They are the promotional company. So Pilot, instead of the word owner, it should say Pilot Cove LLC has secured security.
Okay.
And that's all I had. Anybody else?
We're talking the 15th here, right?
Yes, just the 15th. Bob has a bunch of them, so you got it. All right, why don't we do Grace first, if it's okay with you, Bob? And speak into your mics, please, because she doesn't have her hearing aids in.
I have a big enough voice, you can hear me anyway, but I will speak into my mic. So on page two, where it said Todd Goslin can forward, and it should be came, he did not say that there would be no pesticides in his greenhouse. He said there would be no pesticides in the wetlands. And it should not say in the greenhouse.
Okay, so what paragraph is it on page two?
Oh, my gosh, let me see. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
What?
Well, that's because I printed mine from my computer.
Where does it start with?
Todd Goslin.
That's the same one where I, where I corrected the can?
Yes.
And, and he didn't?
He uses mild pesticides.
You say that he did not say that, Grace?
He did not say that there would be no pesticides in the greenhouse. He said there would be no pesticides in the wetlands.
Which is what she says here.
But not, but then it says land in the greenhouse. He's going to get rid of that.
Okay, okay.
Because the next part explains it nicely.
Do you remember that distinctly, that it didn't say for any greenhouse?
Yes, yes, he did.
Well, if you look at the next sentence, it explains it exactly. However, if there is an outbreak of certain insects, and he cannot eliminate them, he uses mild pesticides in the greenhouse. It should add?
Okay, so you want me to take out and in his greenhouses?
Correct.
Correct.
And I think following the second sentence there, it should say he uses mild pesticides in the greenhouse.
Yep, okay.
And most of the rest of them, Joyce, you already got them that I had, so I think I'm pretty good there. Oh, I also, I didn't like on the one that starts separate land, separate land into three building lots.
Where was this, under Taylor?
Uh-huh.
Did Taylor even come to that meeting?
Yes, he did.
What page?
What page is it? Because I have the wrong copy.
Oh, he was asked at the greenhouse.
Yes, he is, the, the next section.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay, so it starts with David Taylor? But then you call him Dave, and I don't think that's appropriate.
It should be David.
Can I do David?
Yes, please. I know that's a little thing, but?
That's fine. He's my best friend.
I, I understand that. And then the other thing is, there's two of them that are both scheduled to be on the agenda at 7:15, and I don't think that's accurate, because if you look here?
Wait a minute.
Our page is S. Our page is this.
So.
You're right.
What, where?
Well, I have them highlighted, one was the Nate Johnson one, it says seven fifteen, and then it says that.
Are you looking at what's on the agenda?
No, no, she's looking at page four.
I'm looking at the minutes.
Minute.
Okay.
And there's two of them that say they're going, this one says there'll be the second agenda item at seven fifteen. I think that is accurate. But this one here, it says Chair Foley scheduled the applicant to be on the agenda at seven fifteen, which, that slot was already taken.
So what time do I put in there?
I believe at seven thirty.
Okay.
I guess I could see if, on my agenda page.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
That's okay, seven thirty is, is fine.
Well, actually, no, they were on for Sep-, oh, I see, the agenda's all a mess, too, because the agenda has a seven o'clock, a seven o'clock, and a seven fifteen.
That's my fault.
Whatever.
Do I have it minute seven?
The agenda for this meeting, you mean?
No, 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 that was for October sixth.
Oh, we don't care about that, that's the agenda.
Well, these were the minutes talking about October sixth, that's why I was, okay, well, I'm done.
How about you, Bob? And get into your microphone, please, so she can.
I think on the first page, down under Agenda Items, we refer to it as Separate Building Lots, and I think we really ought to be calling it a minor subdivision. Three lot minus subdivision.
Nobody really said that word. But everybody on the board knows.
We brought it up a number of times, and we tried to convince him as to what it was.
Three lot sub- minor subdivision?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds better, yep.
It's in school road.
That's what it was started as.
Okay, and the next paragraph, the one that starts with Public Hearing to Build a Garage, that one?
Yeah.
Okay, first paragraph, last sentence. You've got, she distributed a new site plan that showed that her garage to be built is in compliance. Oh, I just said, I just took out to be built and just put proposed garage. Just a little quicker, not, not absolutely critical.
She distributed?
A new site plan.
She distributed a new site plan that showed her proposed garage is in compliance with Shoreland.
That does sound better.
So take out to be built and add the word proposed before the garage.
Okay.
The next line, Bonnie, her last name is Laughlin.
Yes, oh, I missed that one.
Have I spelled it wrong?
Yes, it's Laughlin, yeah.
How do I spell it?
L-A-U-G-H-L-I-N.
Just like you did up on the others, President, President L-A-U-G-H-L-I-N, you spelled it correctly up there, but not down there.
Okay, page two.
Oh, I see.
First paragraph under Conditional Use Permit. Todd Goslin.
Yeah.
You refer to it as a hardware store, it's not, it is a building supply store.
Right, right.
Thank you, yep.
That shows up in a number of places.
In that paragraph, I say what?
You say it's a hardware store and greenhouses, it is a building supply store and greenhouse.
First paragraph, very top, right under the conditional use.
And it starts with Todd Goslin?
Came forward and said nothing has changed. The second line.
Says nothing has changed on their site plan for the manufacturing building, and then you've got hardware store and greenhouses. Just take hardware store out and put building supply store. You good?
Instead of hardware?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. I'm not sure where it is against you.
It's the second, the first paragraph, the second sentence. Are you on page two?
I'm on page two. The very first paragraph, under Conditional Use Permit.
Donna, are you on page two?
I'm on page two, right here. Oh, I see it, hardware, I see it, thank you.
The light is on.
Okay, I was way down the page.
Okay, you good there?
Okay, what's next?
Okay, the next paragraph that starts with Chair Foley. Second sentence that starts with those items included, remediation of three point two acres of wetland over three-year period, blah, 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 blah. Are resolved, I'd like to add to EPA specs.
Are resolved to DEP specs?
No, to EPA specs.
EPA specs.
EPA specs.
It's just added on to the sentence.
On the end.
Yep.
Got it.
Now, I don't know if you want to bother, we're still waiting on that meeting, aren't we?
On what?
We may as well go, we're still waiting on the next.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, no, we're doing the minutes now, yes.
All right, the one, two, three, four, starting with the fifth paragraph that begins with Pete Landman.
Yeah?
Second sentence, it says Todd Goslin said he has the drawings which show the building, we don't need, take that out.
Rectangle, you want the whole sentence out?
I want that sentence going.
Okay, I'll take that out.
In material to the discussion here. And then he'll have the drawings for the next meeting, that's fine.
Yeah?
One of the buildings will be a warehouse, the next one says Nate Johnson, partner, said he is a landscaper. I don't think that is pertinent at all, take Nate Johnson, that whole sentence out, all the way down to getting the business off the ground as a different priority.
Why would you take that one out? I don't agree with that.
Because we're talking about the construction plans.
Well, Todd, yeah, which includes landscaping.
Yep, and if you read that sentence. It says that he's a landscaper and asks the board to have trust in them to landscape the site after the construction is done. You want to leave it in, you can, I don't see it as pertinent, but that's fine.
Well, it is what he said, so I think it should be.
Oh, no, there's no question he said it, the question is, does it belong in the minutes, that's my question. Why don't we take anything else that somebody said?
We're not taking that one out.
You've been overruled, Bob.
Page three. Page three.
Page three.
First paragraph, Judy Waymoth. W-E-Y-M-O-U-T-H.
Judy Waymoth, not Wentworth. How do you spell her last name?
W-E-Y-M-O-U-T-H, I believe is correct.
She's on page three?
The very first, top paragraph.
Oh, yeah, it's.
Judy Waymoth.
It's Waymoth, you're right.
Okay, and the fifth paragraph on the same page that starts with Todd Goslin.
Yeah.
You've got Todd Goslin can, came, it should be came forward.
Yeah, we thought already correct.
You fix that, okay, hold on.
Yeah, we've got that, I'll take it.
But iterated, it should be reiterated that there will be no pesticides. That's the word you're looking for.
Did you just give me a change?
Yes, it will now read Todd Goslin came forward and reiterated.
On page four, under Conditional Use Permit, to build in the Shoreland.
Yeah.
It should be in the Shoreland Zone.
Okay, up in the heading?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You've got Chair Foley asked for a sidewalk, and then Chair Foley scheduled
Yeah, we already changed it.
The applicant to be on the agenda, I, I think, we scheduled that for a public hearing, am I right? On that item?
For Althea. Scheduled the applicant to be on the agenda at seven thirty, she doesn't say what, whether it's public, oh, okay, I thought it was a public hearing, so, all right, that's fine.
And under other.
Yeah.
Second paragraph, Chair Foley said that the planning for the concert scheduled for October fifth seems to be going along nicely. I'm not sure that makes sense the way it's written now.
October fifteenth.
October fifteenth.
Yeah, Chair Foley said that the concert schedule for October fifth at Leamington-Harmon Airport seems to be going along nicely.
Okay.
Okay, I just put the planning for, because it sounded like the concert was, you know, whatever. You've got the hardware store again comes up under Review of Minutes, the last paragraph on page four.
Greenhouses and hardware, yes.
Buildings and hardware.
It should be building supply.
Building supply.
Yep.
And that is.
What's the difference?
There's a big difference.
They're very different types of stores.
Okay, anybody else have any corrections?
Yeah, I have one.
Yeah?
I printed this off, same as you did, so, it's on here, like, it's on, I have it the second page, but, where Mr. Taylor asked if he could split the land in two lots, it required to write information above, which is the wetland stuff. And you have, I said yes, it should have been, I said no.
But that's on, that's on, that's on the other minutes that we aren't doing tonight.
Yeah, we're not doing. Well, this is why I printed off, so.
That is.
Yeah, but that's for October sixth.
We decided to table that.
There are so many things that are wrong in October sixth.
You're right, I'll get that on mine, too.
So where are we looking?
We're not doing, okay, we're not, no, everything's, well, we're just doing the September fifteenth minutes, yeah.
Right.
Because there are so many things that are not right in.
So what are we gonna do?
Next time we meet.
Next time.
Okay, are there any more changes to the September fifteenth minutes?
Gee, and I really thought they were going to.
If not, if not, is there a motion to accept them as corrected?
I make a motion to accept them.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Pete seconded.
Who made the vote?
Daryl seconded, Daryl seconded.
Whoever.
All in favor? Okay, all righty, I don't believe Ms. Snyder is coming in, it's twenty of eight or the better. So what we're going to do now is, we're going to the mass gathering, and I know Mr. Patridge is here, but this is not an open meeting, so this is just a board discussion tonight. But I do want to thank you once again for sending me all those cities and towns, you saved me some work and I appreciate it.
Okay, I, I won't.
No, we'll be having a public hearing, hopefully, next time we meet, which will be mid-November, and that will be when anybody can come in and say whatever they want to say.
Is that the drafting when that?
Well, no, tonight, I'm hoping we get through it and, and can have a final draft. Because we don't do the final final until after the selectmen hold their public hearing. When a referendum question comes up, it has to go through us first, we do a public hearing, we pass it on to them, they have to do a public hearing, then, if there are no changes after that, it goes to Patty to be printed up and people to vote on it.
Okay.
So, so, so there are two public hearings, and it comes back to this board to determine whether they're going to put in whatever thoughts came up at the public hearing. Then it goes back to the select board and they decide whether they're gonna put it up to be voted on.
So what, what is the timetable for them today?
Well, we do not meet the first Monday in November, because the, the following day is voting day, and this room will be completely filled with voting booths and everything like that. So our next meeting, I think it's November seventeenth, whatever that third Monday in November is.
Right, okay.
That will be. We'll have, well, they'll have the opportunity that if they want to get a copy of the first draft that we're gonna do right now, that is public information, and, and they would, it would be available.
At that time or before, maybe?
No, it will be available as soon as, as, it's tonight. Whatever the board wants to make for changes tonight, I have the master copy on my computer, I will take it home, correct it, might take me a couple of days, so by next Monday, let's say. It should be ready. And that gives you, everybody, about a month to see it if they want to. Or three weeks or something like that. Yep.
People like to know that.
Oh, yeah, yep, yep.
Excuse me, Joyce, I printed off and put it in everybody's package.
Yep.
An email from Kyle Stark, whether that's the manager of the airport?
I have that.
Okay.
We're not gonna, we're not going into that.
Oh, we're not, okay.
No, I'm talking right, no, right now, we're talking about this paper that starts Mass Gathering. Okay, this one right here, we've got it, Mass Gathering.
This one.
What is she looking at?
We'll talk about the other stuff in a while, but right now, we're focusing on Mass Gatherings.
Could I see that?
Yep.
This will not be on the warrant for November fourth.
Oh, no, of course not, obviously.
In our, that we have.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Our next meeting after tonight will be the third Monday in November. Whatever that is.
Whatever that is, okay.
What's, what's the issue? Did we all get a copy of this?
Did anybody hit the store this week?
I would hope so.
I did, but Daryl said he didn't get one.
Did anybody hit the store last week?
I sent it to everybody, but.
Well, I got it off, I didn't print it off.
No, but I dropped it off at your house. Okay, thank you for coming in, Josh.
Oh, you did? I think he said to me, someone told me, but I don't know.
Okay, so he might have.
And I think we have another copy, Daryl, if you don't.
He went, he's going.
Oh, you know what I did?
What?
I was reading it earlier today, it showed my standby.
All right, wait, let's, Donna, do we have another copy of this, please? Or can we make another copy?
The Mass Gathering?
Yes.
I think it's the only one I got.
No, that's not, that's not the one, Donna, this is the one that I gave everybody, that's not, that's not.
Well, that's what he issues in, isn't it?
Well, I'm sorry, I, this is what I brought down that was gonna be passed out.
Thanks.
To everybody, it was hand-delivered to everybody. What is this here?
Why would I have it?
I don't know.
No, it's indeliberate.
I don't think I have it.
It's indeliberate.
I'm sorry, he's gonna give me one, Joyce.
I hope I didn't deliver the wrong thing.
I think you might have.
Is it one U-type?
Yes.
I only printed off the six that you had on that.
No, no, I sent, this, this is.
I don't, I've got it and Bob's got it.
He's gonna get the copy.
This is what I put together, using information from all those six towns. And.
I don't have it here. Can you do another one, Jason?
You and I have to talk this out, because it's on the computer.
Yes, it is.
We have too many problems with that.
I printed mine from my computer.
I thought at the time you hadn't gotten it typed.
No, no, I, I, because we hand-delivered it, remember? I said we're hand-delivered.
I hand-delivered the six of them.
Because mine doesn't look like his.
I, yeah, that's fine, but this was, okay, well, anyway.
I don't know what's happening with the computer.
Joyce, you sent an attachment, and I printed it, and he printed it at our houses.
But then I sent it to be printed for everybody.
Oh, but it wasn't, okay.
But you delivered it to Bob.
I delivered these six to you, right? And I delivered them to Daryl.
Yeah, all the stuff you, you brought to me.
Yeah, right. Okay, so we're just gonna, what we're working on is.
I'll share mine with you. It's only one page?
No, no, it isn't. This is, I took information from the six, well, I didn't use all six of them, but from the six towns that this, there was Freiberg, there was Cumberland, there was Gorham, there was Standish, there was Scarborough. And I took, and there was something from the state. I took, used their outline and took information, and I wrote in there, in most cases, where I took it from. So I want to go through every paragraph and make sure that you, like, this proposed purpose came from the Freiberg ordinance, and it seemed to be the most concise one and said what it is we, you know, the others went on and on from my point of view. So basically, it says, "The purpose of this ordinance is to control the issuance of permits for mass gatherings within the town of Leamington, Maine, and to prevent tumultuous conducts, riots, unnecessary noise, nuisances, unsanitary conditions, public indecency, or uncontrolled gatherings which may constitute a threat to public health, safety, or welfare with, within the town of Leam-, should probably within the town of Leamington."
Yeah.
Yes, within. Then I, I added, "All such events shall obtain a Conditional Use Permit from the Leamington Planning Board." And one I think I wanted to ask you, Jason, yours is called a permit, right? It's not a license.
It's an event permit.
Okay, so we're gonna take out the word license. So it will read, "All such events shall obtain a Conditional Use Permit from the Planning Board and a permit from the Leamington Select Board." Now, what's the name of that permit? I didn't, is it called an?
Event permit.
Event permit, okay.
Where does that go into?
Well, after it says, "Conditional use permit from the planning board and, and."
Oh.
An event permit.
Okay.
From the Leamington Select Board. "Application fees for all events shall be determined by these individual boards." So, and also, I got your email this afternoon. And I think I have further down in here about CEO, but if I don't, I'm not sure. Craig sent me an email this afternoon saying that if he was to do inspections, would that be a permit thing or just a?
It'd be a permit thing because I don't do inspections on nothing that's not permitted.
Okay, so do you have a name for that?
We'll have to make one up.
Okay, so. So I'm wondering, I'm just wondering if this, I think it's further down in where we would put yours.
I don't see it.
Okay, well, no, I, I don't think I put that you had to get a permit. I think I said something about they had to, I don't know what I said. I'll find it when I get in here.
It was under inspections, I believe, in that.
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, we'll get there and we'll change it when we get to that section, okay? Then it goes, so does anyone disagree with what?
I don't disagree, however.
Yep.
Any changes?
Yeah, that's what it is.
I didn't like the word tumultuous conduct because I felt like tumultuous conduct and riots were very similar.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And I feel like a better word would be unruly conduct.
Okay, unruly, I like that, I like that better.
Unruly.
Unruly conduct.
I didn't like that word.
It is pretty strong.
It's too big.
You know, and you have to understand, like, the Freiberg, the Freiberg one was written. Okay, let's, let's all stick together here.
Well, we don't want to sound just like Freiberg anyway. We want to be ourselves.
Right, and they, they also have the fairgrounds and they very explicitly excluded that. But some of their stuff, that's why.
Did you change another word in that sentence?
No, we just took tumultuous out and replaced it with unruly.
Riot seems like an awful strong word.
Well, that, it's, that's okay. I believe that should stay in there because depending upon.
I think that should stay. I just thought it was redundant.
Yep. So any other changes under purpose?
So to be clear, the verb, verb that you added after that, "All such events shall obtain a conditional use permit by the Leamington Planning Board."
From the Leamington Planning Board.
Yes, and an events permit.
Permit from the Leamington Select Board.
Okay, good. I want to make sure my notes are right. You're good.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
Does this, does this include political events?
That's my question on the next paragraph.
Yeah, but that's why I'm, this was.
So if I wanted to go out and do a anti-Trump thing, I would have to get a permit if I was going to have.
Yeah, in fact, one of the things that the.
That's why I never do it. I don't have to say that.
But at the bottom of the, of that second paragraph that we're going into, that's where that will come in, Daryl. And we, as a board, we have to. We have to set up a. Fee for our condition, for our permit for the, for this, or do we just want to keep it? If it's a conditional use per, permit, it would be the $390 that we charge everybody. There's no reason for us to change our conditional use permit fee. I didn't think, but that's why I'm asking you.
Unless you're going to up that. I mean, it's been $390 for quite a while, isn't it?
Well, it's what we figured.
Couple of years, three years?
Well, it's kind of, does the, does the advertising, maybe we should increase the advertising because now we're going to advertise a sidewalk?
Yeah.
How much will that be? Around $40?
I would say maximum 40.
Okay, so instead.
Four fifty.
Forty dollars just to put on the sidewalk on there, is that right?
To put the ad in the paper.
You have to make it a bigger ad.
It's a little one add.
No, it's not going to be all the time. It just happened to be, it happened to work out that we did the sidewalk on the same day as the public hearing.
I see what you're talking about.
But frequently, we don't do that. So we're going to add another four.
So what about 450? To give us a bit of a cushion there?
Well, you, you want to add 450 to the 300?
No, no, no.
No.
No, no.
They have two separate things on our fee schedule. One is the $300 application fee.
Okay.
And then the next one is the advertising fee. That's the way it goes into the budget. So if we add $40 to the 90, it would be $130 for the advertising fee.
430 dollars.
No, 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 no. Don't, $130.
For advertising.
It will stay 300 for the application.
I was just adding the two together.
Well, we don't put them together in the schedule. They're separate.
Okay.
Yeah, so don't, please don't put them together.
But in the end it's.
No, I don't care. They're separate, they're two separate things.
So is that from here on out or?
Yeah, well.
Well, after they vote on it.
We'll put it in the budget next year.
We can. Come after March.
300 and 830.
Should we vote on that right now so we don't forget?
Yeah.
I propose, I, I. I make a motion that we increase the advertising fee for our conditional use permit by $40, which brings it to $130. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Bob seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? So this will be in March. Okay.
Do you vote?
Yes.
Okay.
So anything else on the per, purpose?
Good job, Joyce.
Okay. Under applicability, "No person, corporation, association, or group of any kind shall sponsor, promote, or conduct a mass gathering as defined or make one's property available for a mass gathering by lease, contract, or otherwise within the town of Leamington until a conditional use permit has been obtained from the planning board and an event permit," which I'll capitalize those two letters, "has been obtained from the select board. Mass gatherings may consist of, but not be limited to, festivals, concerts, entertainment performances, exhibitions, or similar activities." And that's where the political, yeah, so.
Yeah, the other one that came to my mind is, you know, political gatherings that are planned, but then you also have public protests.
I know.
How do you?
Any thoughts?
I can see where.
All the ones that have been all over TV, do those, were those places that had permits or something like that or?
They were under this, right?
I assume so.
Yeah, why wouldn't they?
I would think they would.
I don't think we need to cap to any of them.
All right. That's what this is for. This is not, yeah.
The other thing. Let's get to that first.
Let's decide, limited to exhibitions or similar activities, karma, political, what do you want to call them?
Where is she?
At the end of applicability.
I put public protests and political gatherings.
Yes, exactly. That's what I put, too.
Public protests?
Yes, and political gatherings.
And political.
And that would be.
Gatherings.
The other thing that came to mind is, what about? You know, let's say I got a, you know, a house that's got a pretty good acreage and my daughter's getting married. We're having the reception at home. It's going to be 150 feet.
No, 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 no.
But that's okay because, see?
Because we get further into it.
Because it says gatherings less than 250.
We're getting there, we're getting there.
So just keep the wedding under 250.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's okay. I already paid for that. I only do one.
So Joyce, where are you putting in political gatherings?
At the very, at the very end of that applicability paragraph. After the word activities, there'll be a karma instead of a period.
Okay.
And then it will say, "Public and political gatherings."
Why don't you just exempt weddings? I mean.
Exempt what?
Weddings.
You only exempt it because of the number of people. It would only be required for, what, 250?
If he's having five.
Why should I have to get an event license if my daughter gets married and I have 500?
You know, that sort of makes sense that, that, the purpose of this is not to infringe on, like, you know, the food trucks things or, or family, you know.
I think a lot is where these 400 people are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, when we get there, we can do that.
We haven't.
Well, okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so now we're going on to definitions. Mass gatherings, "Any gathering attracting or attending, or intending to attract a continued audience, a congregation of participants, of 1,000 or more participants for one hour or more." I, I'm thinking, I'm sorry. So, and then, so that's what major mass gatherings. And then minor mass gatherings, "Any gathering attracting or intending to attract a continued audience, a congregation of participants of 500 participants, but fewer than 1,000 participants for one hour or more." Then, then down here on the next paragraph, it says, "Gatherings of less than 250 participants do not require a conditional use permit from the planning board or a, an event permit from the select board." Now, see, I, I put there, what do you think? That, this is what Gorham says. So is this where I think we should, if we're going to put in the verbians, you know, how, how do we say it? Private weddings or just weddings or how do we say it? What, what do we want to exempt from this?
I think any.
We're trying not to get into.
A family wedding should be exempt from that.
Right.
Or should I say it?
Should it? Let's say it's at your house. I can pack a half, half a dozen cars, maybe a dozen in your yard. The rest of them are going to be on 11 up and down. Is that a problem?
Oh, God.
If you have 400 people there.
Usually those kinds of, we could say home weddings, but because anything that would have 400 people would usually held in a event facility.
Have a venue or something.
Parking.
So I, I don't know what you want to do. Further discussion about weddings, what?
You know, and can we?
I think 300 was a, I'd send you that.
Yep.
I think 300 is a good cutoff.
So instead of 250, 300?
Right, because like Bob said, in the case that you get a 400-person wedding, I mean, there's going to be a traffic issue. There's not everybody set up with a mass parking lot.
Yeah.
To accommodate that, so you would want to know at that point.
Is that a problem?
If we're going to be tied up on 11 or, you know.
Well, 117.
I think anybody who's going to have a wedding of 400 people would take care of that. I don't think they'd have it.
Right, you would think so, but we would want to make sure.
Okay, so this, this, gatherings of less than 300 participants. Three hundred or less of, well, if you want to get really technical, they'll say 300 or less. Or do you want to just say less than 300?
Less than 300 is fine, but, okay, what happens to the range from 300 to 500?
Three to five is.
Because we have ma, major ones that are over 1,000. We have minor ones that are 500 to 1,000.
All right, so maybe we should.
And if we have 300 or less, it's not.
All right, so maybe we should change the minor gatherings to be congregants of 300 or more instead of 500.
300 to 1,000.
Right.
Yeah, that would be fine. It just, we can't have a undefined area.
If I remember right, this room right here was licensed for 250 people.
Oh, that's good, okay. So 300 works.
250 people, they'll take up a whole lot of room.
Right, so is, are you comfortable with 300?
It's the cars.
Well, I'm worried about the people. I'm worried about the cars, the company.
I'm worried about 300 people in this room. Well, that's a lot.
No. I don't think that 300 people.
Well, I mean, you know, we, this is.
I'm pretty sure under the, and this was built under the state law, this room could hold 250 people.
We had 85 at town meeting and it was pretty crowded.
I agree.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but I, I've been here, though, when we've had town meetings with around 200 people in here.
Yeah, that's, that's tight.
Were they standing up or sitting?
They always stand in the back, but there were seats and, you know, whatever. All right, can we move on?
Yeah, we can.
Event, now, this is still under definitions. Event coordinator slash operator, the person responsible for the event. And using the airport as an example, the person responsible for the event would be Pilot Cove LLC. Licensee, the person named in the application, that would be Lyle Stockwater because he has, owns the property or is about to, or whatever the condition is.
Are we going to, we're not using license, so we shouldn't be using licensee either. Should be got to be read permit.
Okay.
Permit.
Permit T.
Yep, that makes sense.
M I T.
E E.
E E.
That's right.
P R E E.
Permit E, P E R M I T E E, okay.
And under event coordinator/operator, should it be the person or organization? Because in this case, it was an organization.
Right, yeah, 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 thank you, yeah. So event or operator will read the person or organization responsible.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
Now, you're not going to correct this, I am.
I, I knew you were.
Okay.
No, I, I'm just writing.
Yeah, it's on my computer, so it just makes sense. All right, are we ready to go on to nonprofit organizations?
Yep.
"A corporation designated as a not-for-profit corporation by the United States Internal Revenue Service. The fee for a conditional use permit is waived for this entity."
Do you know that the PGA is a nonprofit organization?
The who?
PGA.
The, the golf association?
Yeah.
Probably are.
They are.
Yeah, the other thing I have questioned. The other question I have in there is, would you, Jason, as a select board, I have, the fee for a conditional use permit is waived. Should I say that a permit for, for a conditional use permit and event permit are waived for nonprofit?
Mutually, yeah, that's probably the smart thing to do in these cases.
The fee for a conditional use permit or.
Event permit.
And event per, permit is waived.
Think about that for a second.
Well, that's what.
Do we really want to do that?
Why, why not? I don't know, you tell me.
Well, I don't either, I'm throwing it off of what's work.
Would that be waived?
Are they nonprofit?
Who?
This nonprofit thing, there's a lot of stuff that's nonprofit.
There is, I can think of.
So you, you think we should have them have to get a, I suppose if they've got more than two hundred people.
It's, it's a five oh three one C.
Right.
Nonprofit.
Right.
And I'm wondering if that should be in.
Well, I say the United States Internal Revenue Service.
You know what, you've gotta cover here, my question was. My question was, why wouldn't they need a permit? Well, they do, we're just not gonna charge for it, it's right here.
Right, right.
Okay, I'm happy with that.
That's the fee, the fee is waived.
Correct, I'm, I'm all right with that.
Then we go to charitable organization. Any person or entity that holds itself out to be organized for any charitable purpose or that solicits, accepts, or obtains contributions from the public for any charitable purpose. For this, for the purpose of this ordinance, an organization established for and serving bona fide religious purposes is not a charitable organization. Then I go on to the next one to say, the provisions in this ordinance do not apply to events sponsored by SAD six school department or other agency of the town of Leamington. And maybe we should include churches there. 'Cause usually churches, we don't make them get permits. Religious organizations.
So if you're not gonna make them get a permit, then you're not gonna make them operate under this ordinance. They don't have to do anything if they, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's the language that I took out. I'm open to changing it. Any charitable organizations, I'm trying to think of, other than the religious organizations, what would a charitable organization be? I don't know, I don't know, like a Red Cross blood drive or, 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 no, that's not.
But I think you're gonna find a lot more nonprofit than you are.
Charitable.
Yeah, you're gonna, you know, nonprofits are all over the place. And that can be manipulated any which way loose. But if they have a bona fide five oh one C three, is that correct?
That's what it is, yeah, five oh one C three.
Then you're good. But if they just walk in and say, you know, I'm a nonprofit organization, we get together, you know.
Looks good for what?
They must have documentation.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to say is that they won't have to pay for the permit, but they still would have to come under the rules regulation.
That's correct, they still have to get the permit.
Yeah.
They just wouldn't get charged for it.
Okay.
Is, do we, I'm, I'm looking at that last sentence, for the purpose of this organization, of this ordinance, an organization established for and serving bona fide religious purposes is not a charitable organization. I'm wondering.
That's fine, but how do we handle?
What's a bona fide religious purpose?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that should be taken out.
That means the whole sentence, 'cause it, the sentence is there to talk about religious purposes. I think we could use a different, what do you think about that?
I don't like the sentence.
I don't either, let's take out that sentence.
What if we put, for the purpose of this ordinance?
What about down to the next paragraph that says, the provisions of this ordinance do not apply to events sponsored by churches or religious organizations, school department?
I think it would be simple enough, we just said, for the purpose of this ordinance, churches and religious organizations are, is not a charitable organization, period.
Well, I think, I think we can take care of it in the last, in the last one-sentence paragraph. The provisions in this ordinance do not apply to events by the SAD six school department or any other agency of the town of Leamington or religious organizations.
But the way I read that is, we don't have to follow the ordinance.
I know.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think it has to be separate.
I, I still think that the other, other than MS eighty-six or the town, I think every other.
Well, they, they do, they, the only thing is that we've waived the fees for charitable and nonprofits.
But the way this reads, the provisions in this ordinance.
Yeah, but that's what we're, oh, so, so.
Do not apply.
So you, you think that the provisions.
It sounds to me that we don't have to follow.
You're talking about churches not having to follow them.
I don't think.
I think, I think other than the town and MS eighty-six, I don't think any other event should not have to follow the ordinance.
Okay.
Agreed.
And I don't believe that it deserves.
Yeah, all right, all right, all right, so wait a minute, we can, we can, we can restructure that last sentence. What were you gonna say, Bob, about that last?
I was gonna say, you're going back up to the last sentence.
For the purpose of this ordinance?
Yeah, for the purpose of this ordinance, churches and religious organizations are not charitable organizations.
I don't know, again.
Churches and what, was that?
Religious organizations, and maybe it's not an organized church, maybe they, you know.
Churches.
Well, I thought you was gonna say that except for the town and, what did you say, except for the town and?
And MS eighty-six.
And MS eighty-six, everybody else has to follow them.
Correct.
Correct, and we're keeping it that way.
Right.
Yeah, so that sentence I didn't like now reads, for the purpose of this ordinance, churches and religious organizations are not charitable organizations.
That's what I like.
Yeah.
Nice and short and sweet.
I don't like organization, organization, but that's okay.
I'll just see if it's changed.
You get this too restrictive and it won't, won't pass, I guarantee.
Yeah, I, I agree, we could get a little kickback from especially religious groups.
No, no.
Well, we're, we're not, we're, we're telling them that.
If they got forty acres and they wanna do something, they can like this.
Well, we could have a Woodstock.
We're not charging them.
We're not charging them.
Correct.
They have to follow the town ordinance.
They've got, yeah, they've got to.
And I think at three hundred, that's reasonable.
I'm talking about getting it passed, no.
Well, if, if we're gonna make it easy for people, I mean, you either make it what you want it to be or forget it. I mean, my concern is that there are going to be people who aren't going to come to the public hearings and not fully understand this. And if I hear one iota of gossip from sleepers or anywhere else, I will do my best to correct you. It is important that we understand the wording so that we all know what we're voting on. This is to protect the town, not to come against any one organization or whatever.
I know the towns have a lot of governance.
Um, that sentence that we were working on, I wanna add one more word to make it sound better.
It's a solution to a problem we don't have as far as.
So, everything the same up to the word are, are not considered charitable organizations.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
So I'll read the whole sentence.
Yeah, would you?
For the purpose of this ordinance, churches and religious organizations are not considered charitable organizations.
Not considered, okay, thanks.
I see it.
Are not considered charitable organizations. Okay. We're on to performance guarantee.
Yes.
A perfor-
We're still getting a problem here.
What?
'Cause we, we've excluded religious down here as a charitable organization, and we haven't included them anywhere else, so where do they fall?
Do they have nonprofit?
Do they come under nonprofit slash churches?
Well, nonpro- nonprofits have to, they all have to follow the ordinance.
Right.
It's just that.
They get the fee waived.
They get the fee waived, so do you wanna put churches or religious organizations?
I think we've excluded them.
Or do you wanna have a?
I gotta go somewhere.
Well, do, do you want to have a separate sentence for?
Yeah, I'd rather incorporate it somehow, let's see.
I mean, basically what you're saying is to exclude them, they shouldn't have to pay, but they're still gonna follow the rules.
Yeah, right.
Right.
So I would just include them in the, you know, however you wanna put it.
Can we put it in?
Churches and, and religious gatherings will follow.
What if we had charitable and/or religious organizations?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, they are charitable, I mean, people give to them for charity. I don't, that's a good point.
They're gonna be exempt anyway, so I guess, they're gonna be exempt from the, from the fee.
Right.
Right.
No matter where you put it, so.
So churches are considered religious organizations, as opposed to charitable.
Churches and religious organizations are exempt from the fee, but not the provisions.
So why do we have churches and religious, so any?
Well, I guess, I guess at this point, the more I think about it, why don't we strike that last sentence? Think about this for a minute, strike that last sentence.
Yeah, and do what?
And add, make the, the, the heading on this charitable slash.
Religious.
Religious organizations.
We can do that, that makes sense.
And then any person or entity that holds itself to be a charitable or religious blah, blah, blah. That way we've incorporated them all.
That's better. That's much simpler.
And they won't be charged the fee, but they're still gonna have to.
Yep.
Get the permit.
Yep, I like that. Okay, all righty, and then we're gonna take that last sentence right off, okay, okay.
The one that's provisions of this ordinance?
Um, no, no.
No, keep that.
That stays just exactly as it is, that has to be separate.
Under US federal law, churches and places of worship are considered nonprofit organizations.
Yeah.
All right, well, then, then, then we move it up and.
Yeah, so it should be nonprofit slash churches.
Yeah.
Yes.
So they fall under the nonprofit.
Nonprofit organizations slash churches.
Yep.
Matter of fact, churches are allowed to own property.
Right.
And it still would be exempt.
Yep, okay, all right, that settles that.
We don't need that last sentence can go away on.
What, what sentence, wait a minute.
Just one where it says, for the purposes of this.
Oh, yeah, I've already crossed that out.
So, yeah, I think that's the cleanest way to do it.
Yeah, you're right, thank you.
And religion is out of charity.
Correct.
Which is that sentence?
Okay, so the provisions of this ordinance do not apply to events by the, and I will put MS and, with the M in, SAD six school department or any other agency of the town of Leamington.
Correct.
All right, performance guarantee. A performance bond issued by an entity authorized to do business in Maine, cash, escrow, or other financial guarantee acceptable to the select board in an inform approved by the town attorney. Now, if you will go to the, to the Gorham. I see, I said, see further language in Gorham's ordinance, page two. And why did I say that? Performance guarantee. Oh, because it starts on page one at the bottom. They have a whole paragraph on what it is. Do you have this language with you?
I, I don't have it.
I'll read you what Gorham says. Gorham's performance guarantee shall mean a performance bond issued by an entity authorized to do business in Maine, cash, escrow, or other financial guarantee acceptable to the, well, they say the town clerk, so it would be the select board, and in a form approved by the town attorney, provided by an applicant for an outdoor event license to guarantee, or to warranty, the payment of the costs of the prompt cleaning of the grounds after the close of the outdoor event, and the town police, which we don't have, the town fire rescue, or other municipal employees in public works, prevention, and law enforcement activities, which we don't have, performed by the town. In other words, the public costs for cleaning up is what. These public costs shall be those costs incurred by the town in connection with the proposed outdoor event, which would not be incurred by the town if the outdoor event were not held. The town shall release the performance guarantee. If the event coordinator pays all such public costs within thirty working days, all costs have been paid in full. So I didn't know if you wanted, and I know you have questions about the performance bond situation, but I, did you get my email, my response to that?
I don't, I don't believe so, I just speak with the, the attorney email back.
Right.
About adding fifteen percent and, 'cause the, we're talking about on the, the solar farm.
Right.
Yeah, the solar farm, they spoke in that, we would have to get, the amount of that bond would have to come from their project manager.
And they're supposed to give that amount to Craig.
Yes, and then we would pay that, that would be the price, and then we'd probably add fifteen percent of the cost.
So that would apply to this as well.
Yes, you know, it would have to have a.
But we're not gonna go into the detail of that, that would be what you would do when you give your event permit.
Yeah, we would call the attorneys, figure out, you know, traffic, fire, air mess, you know, if, if something was to happen, if we had to send public works in, that type of stuff.
Yeah, I'm sorry you don't have a mic over there, Jason.
That's okay.
Why doesn't he come over here?
Uh, he's got a plug in his computer. So are you, what do, what does the board feel about performance guarantee? To me, this is the simple way of saying it, that that's what a performance guarantee is. And we don't need to get into the, in my opinion, the language that's in the Gorham one.
It gets too confusing, adding too much detail.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So person is any natural person, sole proprietorship, partnership, corporation, or other entity. All right, event operator. The event operator shall be required to be on-site at the mass gathering at all times. The operator will be the main contact person for the town before, during, and after the mass gathering, and will be responsible for facilitating any inspections required or requested by the code enforcement officer. This is where I, where, so this is where you.
Craig comes into play.
Craig comes into play. So I'm not sure if we need to clarify that from your point of view. It says, the operator will be the main contact person for the town before, during, and after the mass gatherings, and will be responsible for facilitating any inspections required or requested by the code enforcement officer. So this doesn't say that you will do the inspections, it says that you will tell them what they have to do. But then again, I guess you have to go inspect to make sure they did it. So how, what would you like to be added to that?
Well, there should be some type of fee added in there.
Well, the inspection fee's gonna be, like, that concert should've had an electrical.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So the permit fees are gonna follow your schedule, but you are gonna decipher what needs to be done and what doesn't. I mean, it's gonna fall under the ordinance.
I'm not saying we should add a penalty into this.
You can add that into your schedule.
That's gonna be on the fee schedule.
On your fee schedule, absolutely, so that doesn't have to be here.
Inspection fee for, event inspection fee.
Yeah, that, that's, that's his to-do. So we don't need to put that in here, are you comfortable with that?
You don't think that should, that should be anything that say that they need to pay the, you know?
I think if we go back to paragraph one, where we did the event conditional use permit application advertising, and we should.
Where do you?
At the very beginning, under purpose.
Oh, 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 yes, and include.
Other fees may be incurred as determined by the CEO, or something to that degree.
It says that last sentence, application fees for all events shall be determined by these individual boards, including the fee for code infection, including inspection permit fees from the code enforcement.
Depends on what they're doing too, I mean, like, up there, they did the generators, which is a permit fee, I mean.
Why is the electrical permit fee, with their supplies in the power?
It's on the fee schedule, on the electrical fee schedule. And I, myself about it, and he says, oh, hell, yeah.
Okay, so.
You can always follow it up with the, to include CEO permit fees.
Yeah, all, okay, so application fees for all events shall be determined by these individual boards, including code enforcement?
Inspection fees?
Code, C E O inspection fees, yes. Does that make sense to you, Craig?
So do I need a permit to put a generator?
All righty, so, all right, so we're gonna leave performance, we're down to.
Under event operator, I do have one suggestion, and see if this makes sense. We just went through that paragraph. I'm thinking ahead that if we have an event that starts to go sideways, you need to be able to contact that person immediately. And so I, I would like to add something that says, the name of the event operator and phone number is to be made available to the CEO, and the event contact must be made during the event.
Wait a minute, what are you saying, the event contact must be made?
What I'm saying is that before the, the, the name of the event operator, the guy, who's in charge, on-site.
Mm-hmm.
And phone number is to be made available to the CEO.
Mm-hmm.
And the event contact must be made, that's a bad word.
Yeah, I don't, that doesn't make sense.
Let's get rid of that.
Didn't make sense there, yeah.
Um, is, is to be, to be made available to the CEO.
If such an.
If contact must be made during the event.
You have a permit anyway, don't you?
Yeah, I want, I want him to be able to pick up the phone and get that guy if something is wrong.
Yeah, but that means.
I don't wanna walk around three thousand people.
Yeah, that means Craig would be on-site all the time.
I was just gonna say that.
Which he's not.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, you get a call, or somebody gets a call and says, X Y Z is going on, there's.
Citizen calls.
Whatever it may be, and.
That means Craig's on call all day.
Not only that, he's not a cop.
No.
So, I mean, his, his job wouldn't.
What would I do, I'd call the state police?
Right, I mean, that's not your job, it wouldn't answer.
Yeah, no, we, we have.
I'm not saying that it's an enforcement situation, it's a.
Well, it is, yeah, if there's something, if there's a problem down there, something needs to, there.
So what you're saying is, without that, I can pay the fee and then do whatever the hell I damn please, and if it all falls apart?
No, there are other requirements in here that you have to meet. I mean, it talks about, you know, it's not that you can do what the hell ever you want. You, you, you just want somebody, you, you want someone that the event operator has to call. And this town, the way we're set up as a government and functioning boards, that's, we don't have it. Local police, the town didn't, didn't want one. The town has voted down this town having a constable or whatever you wanna call him. We don't have it, they're gonna have to call the state police.
I wasn't thinking, I wasn't really thinking about a, 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 a police situation, I was talking more about.
If there's a, if there's a riot, or if there's a public indecency?
The electrical system, what, I don't know, parking gets out of control, so I don't know. I, I, I just thought it was important that if we had someone.
We don't.
That you could pick up the phone and.
We don't have anybody, we truly do not.
Well, they can call Bob.
How about the town manager?
No, I, I, I hear what you're saying.
I mean, you know what, you're right, I mean, you know, if there's nobody.
There isn't anybody to put.
I like what you first said, when you put, when you wrote this and sent, and sent it out with the other towns. Let's not reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we're moving on to requirement, requirement of a conditional use permit or event permit. Event permit for mass gatherings. Events is too many words. No person may sponsor, promote, operate, or hold any mass gathering event that attracts, and we need to switch that to three hundred, 'cause we put it before, three hundred or more people, unless a conditional use permit from the planning board and an event permit from the select board is first obtained. The permitting procedure shall be administered in the following manner. One, the applicant shall admit, submit eight copies. Now, there's six of us on the board, that should be eleven copies, because three of the, of twelve, because it would be the six of us, Craig is seven, Donna is eight, the three select board, and Matt, so.
That's twelve, yeah.
Twelve.
Yeah, twelve.
Twelve copies.
Yeah.
The applicant shall admit twelve, submit twelve copies of the application and all other related and required information to the planning board, not less than sixty days prior to the proposed event. Upon receipt of the application, the planning board shall immediately forward copies to the select. Upon receipt of the application, the planning board shall immediately forward copies to the select board and the town manager." So it's like having a, a conditional use permit come in. They all come to you, and then, when you get them, you give these guys the copies. Um, but what I'm, what I, the question I have there, is sixty days sufficient?
Well, I put a note here under that.
Huh?
I put a note here under that. Will any of these re-kick, kick a public hearing?
Well, uh, oh, yeah, conditional use permit is a public hearing.
My point exactly, so I, I, I don't know, I, um.
It could be forty-five days if we have a following on Monday or something happens like this gonna happen next.
Well, how, how, you know, we.
Say, if they get approved or not.
Right.
To come up with one of the.
So should it be ninety?
Ninety days.
I think it should be ninety.
Ninety? Okay, I, I don't have any problem. That's why I put this stuff in here.
Well, it kinda stinks for them, too, because now, sometimes.
Well, if you plan a big.
Ninety days if they're gonna go do something.
That's the problem, I know. I see problems.
But if you're gonna do a mass.
It's their problem.
If you're gonna do a mass gathering, you've got it planned within three months.
I think one of those that you said actually had more than ninety days, didn't one of them?
Yeah, one of them had a hundred and twenty, I think, but we don't, I, I think ninety is more than enough.
Good compromise.
Alright, number two, "The required non-refundable application fees to both boards shall be paid at the time of submission. No fees are required for charitable organizations, religion organizations, or not-for-profit." Do we wanna take that sentence out, 'cause we've already addressed it earlier on?
Yes.
I, I think it's superfluous.
I, I actually made a, made a note. Do we, do we want this? And I think, no, we don't.
Okay, number three, "The applicant shall post a performance guarantee or bond in an amount reasonably necessary to ensure prompt payment for all damages caused by attendee or employees, attendees or employees, it should be plural, to public and private property resulting from or in connection with a mass gathering. Promptly following the mass gathering, the town shall release the performance guarantee if the operator pays all cleanup and public costs within ten working days after the mass gathering." Comfortable with that?
Yep.
I am, I did make one.
So the town is, the town is taking a performance bond on private property?
That's my question. I got it right here. I said, can we require this if it's on public property?
Yes, because, if it's on what?
If it's on private property.
Um, we have said earlier in here that, um.
The operator would have to, to do a performance bond, but I don't think it could be made up.
Well, it isn't. It, it, it is the, it isn't the, it is the applicant that puts this bond forward.
But how would it be made out to the town?
Because the town, the town, it, the town would have to go in and clean up after the performance, let's say, if, if, you know, if it wasn't handled properly. And so the town holds.
So the town would be holding the money?
Town would hold the money. The people organizing, organizing it, go in and clean it up. If it's on private property, the owner will call the selectman and complain, and, and then the selectman will say. Or Craig will go out and do a final inspection to make sure it is the way the property owner wants it.
That being said, if I'm going out doing a private inspection, there's gotta be a fee to have this through, through my office.
I'd pay.
You're really into the fees, aren't you?
Well, I'm just saying, if you guys want me to go do inspections, I can't do inspections without.
Well, I don't know how, I don't know whether, how the CEO is responsible for any inspections except for what he.
Well, well, exactly, what he has to do. He has to do electrical.
Right, well, he's called in to do it, but as a person who's gonna answer if they spot him with something.
He's not going to do that. We did not put that language in.
Well, and why would I go ahead and make sure I got cleaned up?
Well, no, you, no, you, I would kinda think that's part of what you do. I mean, I don't know, you tell me, am I wrong? No?
Yeah, that don't sound like something I would do.
No, it don't to me either.
Okay, so who does?
Could do, but it's costing some money to do it, I don't.
Well, um, I think, I don't know, um.
You know, if it's on public property, it's pretty easy. I mean, we're gonna know.
Maybe send, send someone from the public works down to look at it.
You know, the only scenario.
Wait a minute, excuse me, Jason?
Being private property, we technically have no jurisdiction.
Right.
So I can, say, Kyle, say, just for instance, Kyle left all the trash and the porta-potties were dumped over, where it's a, it's an issue, but, ooh, are we responsible?
Well, that's why we have the performance bond.
Property, the address may have a meltdown, but it's, once again, a civil, it's a civil matter.
That's right, it is.
So I don't know if we're trying to overstep.
Well, I, I mean, they have, the, Kyle or, who, using that as an example, he has a responsibility to the town to ensure.
Private waterways, you know, right.
Uh, to ensure that the property is not, that there's no, um, well, to use an example of the porta-potty being dumped over, that could have a, a, an effect on the neighboring homes and on the water supply, or things like that. I, I, you know.
Well, we're leaving the, we're leaving the landowner completely out of any liability. The landowner would, has liability, too.
Well, then, are we saying that we don't give, we don't care whether he cleans up the property?
Something there, I'm just not sure who does it.
Yeah, and I, I.
Well, do we give the.
Should know of accountable someone, but I don't know what the answer is.
I don't either.
I mean, I don't think, if somebody wanted to put on a, you know, a, a one-day event for a bunch of people in church to get together, I mean, are we gonna make them put up a performance bond?
No, this would be for the, they're, they're exempt, that's to be for the.
But if they were putting on a, you know, if they were putting on.
Over three hundred, yeah.
Say, say they were, say, you know, how, how do we handle that?
But even, even if we.
Why would the owner be involved in this permit?
Well, the, the owner is involved in the permit. Don't we say owner-operator? Oh, no, we say event operator. Oh, maybe we need to change that title to include owner-event operator.
The landowner?
I, you get landowner, is, is important.
I'm just curious what kind of deal they made.
We're looking for that, they're on.
He's pretty out, what's his name?
Kyle?
No, the guy who owned the.
Looking right here.
Kyle, oh, Mamu.
Mamu.
What kind of deal, I mean, because Mamu's not done, he's not gonna take the liability for something happened there, so what did they do there? Did he make him produce a bond for him?
I have no idea. I really don't know, yeah.
Even if we required the bond, but, take the airport, for example, maybe a windstorm comes through, the, the trash cans get knocked over, and all that trash gets flown over to Evergreen.
He would be.
Who are you gonna pay to, who are you gonna pay to, I mean, what's the purpose of the bond?
That's not my problem.
Exactly.
That's where the money comes from.
Well, the, the performance bond is to cover that very situation.
But now the town's getting involved in.
Well, if the town is going.
Why don't we just make the owner of the land get the, why don't we just make those people get it?
Get the performance bond?
Get the permit.
Can we make a, a private owner?
I'm not sure, I'm not a lawyer, so.
I was gonna say, maybe we oughta ask Matt or the attorney that question. It may, it may be, is it legal, is it not legal?
I know, it's gonna be every one of the things.
It must have some.
Performance bond, and they're about, how, why does the town get involved?
Because the town is allowing the gathering to take place. So you will have to assume some responsibility. That's why you have these ordinances, is that you.
But why does the owner of the property get away with no responsibility?
Well, they have to put up the money. If, if, let's use this as an example.
So he's the one that's gotta put the money up?
He is the one.
The owner of the property?
The owner of the property.
Okay, now I'll go along with that.
Puts up the performance bond.
Okay, that's good.
And if everything isn't back to what it should be, or somebody complains, or like, whatever.
That can work.
The town would say to him, "Look, you better go clean that up, or you're not gonna get your performance money back." It's, they only get the performance bond back if everything is copacetic at the end, within ten days after the event. Everything has to be.
Okay, so it's the owner of the property who's gonna take out?
Yes, yeah.
So ten, ten days, is that what all the, all the say is, ten days, I mean?
Well.
That's quite, that's quite a timeline there.
Yeah.
Well.
Why not two days?
Yeah, that would be.
Well, well, I, let me see, where, where did it say? Where was the ten days in here?
Like you said, the porta-potty's dumped over, I mean, you're gonna let that be, okay, ten days, or?
Alright, where did I, did I just read ten days somewhere, or is this something that, I've typed this so many times.
The ten days is on number three at the bottom.
Ah, okay, so, public costs with, within forty-eight hours? Two, two working days?
Have you figured weather in that?
Might take.
Who cares about the weather? They gotta clean it up, whether it's snowing or raining, or.
And holiday?
Well, we'd say working days, so that, you know.
If it's snowing, there could be an issue, because it could cover up everything.
Well, they're not gonna have a mass gathering, but.
Well, I understand, but.
You know, I mean, let's not get ridiculous. Let's stick to the reality of it.
This is really not relevant to what, but what I can't, like, some of these things that went on this weekend, there were thousands of people there. You mean that they had, they have toilet, they, somewhere they had toilets?
Yes, they did. They had porta-potties there.
Or did they, you know, I, I understand they got a permit, but they, they actually had enough porta-potties to handle those thousands of people?
Yes, yes.
Because when they showed overhead shots, big overhead shots, I didn't see any.
Well, they were there, 'cause I saw them.
Eighteen or twenty of them there.
Yeah, yeah, I saw them.
For five thousand people?
They weren't there all at once, though, Dell. It was coming and going.
Three thousand people total, but it was coming and going.
Yeah, it wasn't.
I mean, it was a constant, people were leaving, people were coming. I don't know what the honest, I would say, if I had to guess, maybe at max fifteen to eighteen hundred in that facility at one point in time.
They had, I will tell you, having been there, that was not a problem. They had ample porta-potties.
Oh, yeah, I know that, yeah, but I'm talking like, they showed one thing on, on TV here.
Oh, you mean these?
To me, like, what they had this weekend, there was a lot more than fifteen hundred people there.
That's, that's.
That'd be ten or fifteen thousand people.
Yeah, we, we.
You know, the, the other problem you have is, some of these events, especially if it's a political or some sort of a, um, public event like that, you may estimate five hundred people.
And a thousand to show up.
Five thousand.
Yeah, well, it's highly unlikely in Manhattan that's.
Is a good example of that. I don't think anybody expected that kind of turnout, but, um, you know what? We, we deal with what we can deal with.
That's right, that's right.
I know, originally, they were expecting eleven, twelve hundred people for that concert, and there they go, three thousand.
Yeah.
So I mean.
That was only period of the day, though, right?
Right, right.
And GORM's does say, within twenty-four hours.
Yeah. Do you want it to be, so, uh, where, where is that in the GORM one?
Um, GORM, it's under refuse disposal D, number three.
We have, well, we haven't gotten to refuse disposal.
No, but we were talking about cleaning up.
Well, it says twenty-four hours in here, too.
And this one says, "The property will be cleared of refuse within twenty-four hours."
That's exactly what it says on our refuse.
Oh, okay, so this is.
So, um.
That's, that's garbage, so they'd have some extra time to pick up the toilets.
To get rid of their toilets, okay.
So what, what this sent, what, what this says, now we're back on number three here, the last sentence, "The prompt, promptly following the mass gathering, the town shall release the performance guarantee if the operator pays all cleanup and public costs within," now, we've got ten days. Do you wanna put two working days? What do you think?
I say thirty-six hours.
Thirty-six, that's three days?
Well, well, if it's a day and a half, if you go consistent.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I, I didn't get over to see.
I was thinking forty-eight hours.
Supposedly that was.
I couldn't live with forty-eight, right?
Let's go forty-eight.
Forty-eight hour, okay.
Forty-eight hours from the end of the event, whatever that is.
Within forty-eight, forty-eight, within, oh, this says working days, so we're gonna say two working days. Within two working days.
No, I don't want working days.
I say forty-eight hours.
Forty, okay, alright, alright, okay.
From the end of the event, no matter what day it is.
Sunday, on working days.
Sunday, Sunday off.
Alright.
So let's do forty-eight hours.
Doesn't make any difference, the next day is Christmas.
Alright, I get it. The public costs are within forty-eight hours after the mass gathering. Okay, number four, "Standards listed below and relevant conditions detailed in the Town of Lamenting zoning ordinance for a conditional use permit shall be followed." So they still have to go through this book, like everybody else does.
Yeah.
Okay, conditional use permit, select board, event permit. Standards, "In reviewing the event conditional use permit application, the planning board shall determine whether the application meets all the following standards." So that's really, this is, reiterates and is redundant to what is said in here, but I think it's important that it still be in here. "Safety access, that convenient and safe access for the ingress and egress of pedestrian and vehicular traffic exists, and that traffic safety shall be maintained on streets serving the event."
Perfect.
Now, of course, we have no police officer, but, alright, "Site, that the outdoor event assembly area will be well-drained and so arranged to provide sufficient space for person, for people assembled, not person, I think, should be people, for the people."
For persons.
Yeah, persons is good, or persons assembled.
Okay, okay, okay. For persons assembled, vehicles, sanitary facilities, and pertinent equipment. Two, "That trees, underbrushed large rocks, and other natural features will be left intact and undisturbed whenever possible, and that the natural vegetative cover shall be retained, protected, and maintained so as to facilitate drainage, prevent erosion, and preserve any scenic attributes." Three, "That the site shall be maintained free from the accumulation of refuse and from health and safety hazards, hazards constituting a nuisance." Four, "The assembly area will be adequately lit, but lighting shall not unreasoned, un, not unreasonably reflect beyond the assembly area boundaries unless adjacent properties are uninhabited." Five, "The license shall, licensee."
Permittee.
Permittee, the permittee, P-E-R-M-I-T-E-E, shall be responsible for the posting of no parking signs on streets serving the area as dictated by the planning board in accordance with direction from the fire chief. Do you agree with that?
I do, but I think we should add something else.
What?
In that, they should also be responsible, um, in the event, like the first night over there with the food trucks, they should designate someone to handle traffic. I'm not saying there needs to be a cop, it doesn't even need to be, it just needs to be somebody.
Town roads, we can decipher that, but on eleven, twenty-five.
It's a state.
It's a state road, we have no jurisdiction, and until we have an ordinance in place, we can't govern that.
So you're made, so.
That's what this ordinance is all for.
Well, no, we're, we gotta have a, I think we have to have a traffic ordinance.
Yeah.
Oh, alright.
Just having it listed here, I don't think is gonna cover for the DOT.
So we can tell them to put signs up, but we can't tell them to.
Like I told you, you gotta put signs up in the DOT folder. No, you can't.
She didn't have to, 'cause it was state road.
Okay, yeah.
So, that's, yeah.
Alright, I'm with you. If you don't like it, I'm with you.
Alright, since.
But she had a parking person directed.
Afterward, it, it worked out well.
Yeah.
And that's okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
That's what I was talking about.
But that falls under the event.
Do you, do we want to put in there that the, uh, event coordinator must supply a?
Is responsible for all traffic?
For.
Responsible for traffic control, period.
Traffic control, okay.
Yeah, traffic.
Alright, so do we want to add a six? Or do we just wanna continue?
I think it can go under five.
Okay.
The permittee shall be responsible for the posting of no parking signs or traffic control on state roads.
Wait a minute.
Well.
No, that doesn't make sense.
I think it needs to be.
I think it needs a second, a separate sentence.
Okay.
It reads, "The permittee shall be responsible for posting no parking signs on streets serving the area as well as providing, or as directed by the planning board in accordance with direction from the, not he, fire chief, the fire chief."
Is that gonna fall under the ingress, egress, parking, authority?
Part of, part of the, of here, what's in here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, it's gonna fall, it's gonna fall under the same.
When they come for their conditional use permit, that is the condition the planning board can put on.
Yeah, they're gonna have to list their parking.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Sanitation, "That the required sanitary facilities will be," why do I have that?
Whoever's gonna clean that, oughta clean the bathroom, I was just.
The required sanitary. The required sanitary facilities will be conveniently accessible and well marked. Two, the facilities shall be conveniently located and well identified. Toilet should be provided at a rate of one for each one hundred and fifty persons present at the mass gathering.
Based on number two, we don't need number one.
Yes, we do, because this, the number one talks about accessible and well marked. Number one tells you how many you have, number two tells you how many you have to have.
No, number two says the facility shall be conveniently located and well identified, just like on one.
Yeah.
Okay, then, let's take out of, I'm, I'd like to keep one.
Okay.
And take that first sentence out so that number two, re-toilet shall be...
Okay, yeah, that's perfect.
Okay. I don't know why I put that in there. I was doing this at midnight, one o'clock in the morning at one point.
I don't know how you do it.
I, I could not do that.
The disposal and or treatment of any excretion or liquid waste will be in a manner consistent with the requirements of the State Department of Human Services, Division of Health and Engineering.
Is that what that falls under?
Yes, that's, yes, yes, that is exactly what the others.
All right, so GDP is not involved.
No, no, no. Refuse disposal, the, take out that, jeez, Joyce. Refuge shall be collected, stored, and transported in such a manner as to protect from odor, infestation of insects and or rodents, comma, any and other nuisance condition or conditions which are inconsistent with the health, safety, welfare to the patrons of the event or the public.
I think we got a word problem there.
Okay, which one?
Such a manner to provide, to protect the, from odor infestation of insects and or rodents.
Should we just have...
And any other nuisance.
Okay, so...
We got and and any...
They're in the wrong order.
They're in the wrong order.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay, okay.
See it, okay.
Yeah, I get that, okay.
That sounds good now.
Two, that the grounds and immediate surrounding properties shall be cleared of refuse within twenty-four hours following the event. We have forty-eight hours, so we need to correct that to forty-eight hours?
We should probably be consistent there, forty-eight and forty-eight.
Why wouldn't you just leave twenty-four and be a little lenient?
Uh-uh, we don't, we gotta be consistent.
Oh, twenty-four?
Because we use, we use forty-eight on the other one.
Forty-eight, yeah.
You gotta get, you gotta get the porta-potty guy to come out.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Alcoholic beverages, if alcoholic beverages are sold at the mass gathering, sale of these beverages shall be limited so that public safety and order will not be impaired. The sale of alcohol beverages shall be in compliance with the laws of the state of Maine. Now, in some of the others, and I didn't think about this until just, I don't know, a day or so ago, they talk about, maybe it was in the GORM one that had something about not using public cups. No. No, they didn't address it in GORM. Where was it? In one of them, there was, um... All right, um...
Would, um...
There was something about not using community cups, and I, I thought, well, that's kind of silly, what does that mean? But then I realized that what they were saying is that, Jason, if you recall, one of the alcoholic beverage stands, they were actually pouring the drinks, but in other events, like they have at the, what's the big event center in South Portland there?
Yeah, the Insurance Arena.
Well, that, or the outdoor one, um...
Oh, Thompson's Point.
Thompson's Point.
They keep them in the beverage container so you can clearly tell that that person's drinking a beer. I mean, a kid could walk around with a cup.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I think...
Or, or they have the cans, if you wanna mix drinks, they wouldn't allow that, what they had there. They have cans of like vodka and cranberry juice or gin and tonic or whatever it might be.
That's just an easy...
Yes, but a couple of towns have made that very specific.
It makes sense.
Yeah.
Should we also, oh, doesn't, does that kick in a different permit? Does, doesn't it?
Well, they go...
They have to get a state license.
They have to be state licensed and then have four...
Nothing from the town, if they have the state, they don't need anything from you?
No.
Okay.
The state sends us the...
Yeah, okay.
The fact that they're licensed.
Yeah, this is my question.
Okay, I, I will find that statement about cups and add it to...
I like that.
Okay, on to safety, one, that, take out the what, the there, or that, or whatever the word is. Where an electrical system is installed, it shall be installed and maintained in accordance with the provisions of the applicable state standards and regulation and the town's, the state's standards and regulations and the town's electrical codes. Pretty straightforward. The grounds, building and related facilities shall be maintained and used in a manner as to prevent fire in accordance with the applicable local fire prevention regulations. Three, that internal and external traffic and security control shall meet requirements of the applicable state and local law enforcement agencies. We don't have a local law enforcement agency. So, you can see what I said, do we need different wording, is we do not have a local law enforcement? State...
I was leaving it state.
State law enforcement agencies.
That's who covers us.
Yeah, okay.
State, county.
Yeah. Oh, should I put county in there?
Yeah, 'cause I mean, they are, they do...
The state and counties.
Issue of a big issue, they would have state and county on scene.
Okay. State license, any applicant intending to attract the continued attendance, that should be OF, not PF, two thousand or more persons for twelve or more hours must obtain a state license pursuant to Title 22 MRSA. So, that's a state requirement, that's why that's in there. Applications that require a state license shall provide a copy of the approved state license to, uh, to who, just the select board? Well, actually, if the planning board is doing the conditional use permit, it has to come to the, to the planning board, right? Or am I wrong?
Yeah, they go to you first.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a question, and maybe, maybe the answer's, I just don't understand it. Can we deny a permit if they have a state license?
We don't have anything to say about it.
What's that?
We don't have anything to say about it, wait till I see it.
Now, this is about, uh, says...
This has nothing to do with looking, this has nothing to do with two thousand or more people.
Yeah, two thousand or more people.
So, they go and they get a state, and the state says, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Well, then they have to meet all of our conditions.
They still have to meet our conditions. Okay, so we, we have the final say.
We can't be more lax than the state.
Right.
We can be more strict.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can...
We can put on strict...
We can deny a license even though the state's approved it.
Yeah, 'cause it doesn't fall under our ordinance.
Yep, okay, fine.
You know, the state says you have to do this.
Right.
And then we say, well, you gotta do this, this, and that to do.
Yep, yep.
And if you don't wanna do it, you don't get a permit.
Right.
Uh, so this should be permit decisions, not license decisions.
Right.
And conditions, the select board may deny or grant the permit, and if granting the permit, impose such reasonable conditions on the issuance as would safeguard the public interest, including requiring the applicant to. Now, this infers that, let's say that they get a conditional use permit from us. That doesn't mean they have to give them a permit, you can deny them a permit for whatever, and then it goes on to say, including requiring the applicant to post a performance bond in amount estimated to be equal to the public costs to, to deter, be, to determine if there is a need to hire security and to determine what level of security shall be in place. The cost of any town services, including overtime and benefit costs, are set by the town and shall be paid by the licensee or the permittee.
Permittee, right.
Thank God for the order. Agrees to pay any, pay for any equipment or supplies provided to the town, provided to them by the, and, now, what the heck did I leave out of there? Joyce, check. I'll, I'll check that and see if I left something out, and I'll email everybody. 'Cause I left the word and in, or maybe and means just going on to the conditional use permit. The planning, maybe those should be reversed, too. The planning board cost, conditional use permit, if issued, shall, if, if issued, shall require the applicant to demonstrate by means of a written descriptive plan addressing the standards of this article, that adequate facilities shall be provided at the site of the event in order to protect the health and safety of the people who attend the event, including, and this is redundant because it also set, says the same thing in our conditional, I mean, in our ordinance under conditional use permit, but I think it's still being there.
Yep.
Adequate waste facilities, adequate firefighting, rescue, police personnel, facilities, equipment, and first aid, adequate water supplies, adequate communication equipment. Demonstrate by means of a written descriptive plan that adequate onsite parking spaces will be available. Provide a detailed plan showing how crowd security and police protection of private property will be accomplished. And then I put, is this one necessary?
Yeah, question, Joyce.
Yep.
Is the, uh, the medical part, is that finished by Leamington? Or is that to have to be purchased?
We have full-time staffing, so we didn't have one single call at that event all day Sunday at a nine-hour event on an eighty-five degree day with a lot of older folks.
Yep.
That, it was hot.
Yeah, it was.
We didn't have one single issue, so...
Was, was Emo there with the rescue unit?
No.
No, we had, we were staffed here.
Because they were here and prepared.
We were staffed here, too.
Okay.
So, we had full-time staffing in the building, so if they had a call, we could. But in the, in the case of, you know, a three to five thousand person event, you may wanna put on a second staff for the second rescue. I, I don't know, I think it's per, I think it's per basis at that point.
So, you would not have a vehicle there?
No, they had a spots. Now, Kyle at that airport had a whole section reserved just for fire EMS in the case there was a problem.
Oh, nice.
Right up front, so we would pull right in and pull right to the venue.
Yep.
So...
I don't know, is that, is that...
The town would charge them for that service if they had to?
Well, that would be part of what would be included in the performance bond.
Yeah.
Is that, and then, you know, if, if that was used, that's exactly what...
Say a fight broke out and we had multiple jurisdictions coming, say there was twenty people hurt. Now, we've got standards, ball, we've got people, soccer fee. Now, that's where the performance bond comes into play, is now that's gonna cover all these different towns coming into the event.
And cover their personnel cost and the benefit cost, like what you said in here.
Now, some of their, their employees were also EMTs, so they had their own personal, you know, medical people on staff there.
That one did, but who knows whether the next one will, yeah. Okay, so what, do we need six in there?
Six.
Yeah.
Provide a detailed plan showing how crowd security and police protection of private property will be acco, well, yes, of course it does.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, okay, sorry. Inspections, the person in charge of the site, which is the subject of an application for an event like...
Permit.
Permit. Or a site that has received an event...
Permit.
Permit, shall admit any officer, official, or employee of the town authorized to make inspections of the site for compliance with this article or any other ordinance or statute any reasonable time that admission is requested, which means you can go in anytime you feel is necessary.
That's the building inspector, right?
That's...
Yep.
Correct. In addition to, to any other penalty which may be provided, the select board may revoke the event permit of any permit, permittee. Now, in, in addition to any other penalty which may be provided, I'm not sure if that's the right language, the select board may revoke the event permit of any permittee in the town who refuses to permit entry of any officer, official, or employee or who interferes with such officer, official, or employee while in the performance of his or her duty. So, that's just covering the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Appeals, any person who has denied an event permit by the Board of Selectment or a conditional use permit and ev, ev, event permit or a conditional use permit issued by the planning board or who objects to any conditions in a permit granted to that person by the select board or planning board may appeal the decision to the Board of Appeals within five days. Now, I need to probably check and see if that's in what our ordinance says, 'cause I think it probably should be, or maybe because this is a different kind of thing, maybe the five days is appropriate. Then, after a public hearing, the Board of Appeals shall apply the provisions of sections requirement of a, of a permit for events and permit, 'cause we changed that title to permit. Above and if, after a public hearing, the Board of Appeals shall apply the provisions of the sections, quote, requirement of a permit for events in quotes, and quote, permit section above, and affirm or reverse the decision of the select, so in other words, the, um, the appeals board, if they agree, you know, they have to use those two standards and not just the standards that are in here that are applied to, you know, other issues. They can reverse or do whatever they want. All right, then the bottom thing was just a note to everybody. All right, so, anybody have any more questions or concerns or adjustments? What I'll do is go home and, before the weekend's over, make all these changes, and then I will send, I, I will send it to Donna and ask her to mail. Do, do you wanna get them mailed, or do you just wanna get them on your, on your computer?
I, I like mine on my computer.
I'm fine.
Okay, okay, so, 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 no, so I will just send everybody a copy of this, and you don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
Because this will be what, when we have the public hearing, this edited corrected version will be what? Will be available to the public. And I will get it done before the weekend's over because I told John Partridge that the, you know, the draft version would be available. It's a public document, so, and it's only right that they can see it before the public hearing to make any comments. So, um... If they want a copy, they come and get it.
They can come and get it, or we can have Patty upload it to the...
Put, put it on the website, that's probably a good idea.
That's not a bad idea either.
Let's put it on, let's do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay. Email to everyone.
Yeah, hell, it's a job done right there.
Thank you, guys, I know that this was tedious, but it's one of those things. And could I just, while we're all here, just ask one more thing? Oh, what, where did I have it? I had something about, ah, Airbnbs? 'Cause this is another referendum question, so, um... I, I took our definition of in and I just added Airbnb to it. So, that would be the only changes that, at the time, so I don't know whether, you know, why don't we look at that? And you can email if you think anything should be changed, and we can also do this at the public hearing.
I know I have it, it's someplace in this pile.
I think I've seen it, but I don't remember.
I'll send it out again, I'll send it out again.
Yeah, that's good, I have it in this pile.
Send again.
Truce, does it have to go before the town attorney?
Wait till Jason comes back. So, the public hearing on this, this will be our last meeting until, what's the third Monday of November, somebody?
Third Monday of November is?
It's the seventeenth, do I remember?
Yes.
There's voting's on the floor.
Yeah, it's the seventeenth.
Yeah, yeah.
Seventeenth.
Okay, so we will have a public hearing. We will have a public hearing. November 17th at seven o'clock, so.
Okay.
Let's not have too many other agenda items, because I have a feeling it'd be a rather lengthy.
And raucous, yeah.
Yeah, could be.
So, nobody until December?
So, do we have anybody, anybody that you know of?
What about the guy that didn't show tonight?
That was a lady.
Lady, I mean.
That was just a preliminary.
Yeah, she was just going to come in to talk to us about what she wants to do.
Oh, okay.
She could come, I guess, let's be a ten-minute conversation.
Okay.
Yeah. That would be about.
And other than that, put it off to December.
But it's pretty dead anyway right now, isn't it? Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Public hearing on the 17th?
Yep, we're going to do our public hearing, November 17th.
And we're discussing what?
This.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to send you a copy of this on, on. Can you print off a copy on your, on your computer? Oh, okay, yeah.
So you're going to type it up, and that's going to become the final document?
No, no, that is the final draft.
Draft, okay.
And the final document doesn't come out until after they have held their public hearing. There have to be two public hearings.
I thought we went first and then the town saw.
That's what I said.
Oh, that's what we're doing.
So, so Jason, if we send, if we have our public hearing on the 17th, and we're not going to have anything else on the agenda that night, and then we can, you know, we may or may not agree with whatever anybody says, just because people make some things they want doesn't mean we have to do them, but we will keep a very accurate list of what they want or don't want, and then we can decide whether we're going to put it in or not, because we have to get that to you. I think it's like the 19th of January that Patty has to have.
Has to have.
Has to have everything. So you could even hold a public hearing that first week in January if push came to shove.
Yeah.
Got all December.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, no, we're not going to get it to them until, well, the.
If it's a public hearing on the 17th.
On the 17th.
Yeah, yeah. What's, the first Monday in December is the?
The first, it's the first.
Okay, so we would, if, if we didn't go through everything on the night of the 17th, if we're going, we could use the December 1st for the planning board to make their final final, then send it, get it to you the next day, December 2nd, and then on, on your meeting on the 4th, you could decide what you, if you want to hold.
Yeah, a public hearing, you have to be a week ahead of time.
Yeah.
You got to have.
Send out for the 11th.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, that's going to be plenty of time.
Yeah, and then we will include our definition of Airbnb at the same time. And the other thing that we had was the graveyard thing, but it's too late to go into that tonight.
It is.
And, um. Do we need to have that for the March referendum question? We're not going to get it if we don't do it now. And I don't know if we have been through all of that, we haven't really had a big discussion about it.
We have, there's a lot to talk about.
Yeah, there's a lot, so that, I think, is going to, that's the one that, with the hobbyist.
Right.
Say, yeah, saying, so that's not like a precious thing? Maybe we can do that for the June town meeting, or the following November town meeting, or something like that. I don't, you know, at least, that's my thought. So we would just.
Joyce, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I watched the, the meetings that the select board has and everything, and people are coming in with stuff about the airport, their event, and you are, I don't know, did you ask for feedback? I can't remember. These people were coming in with stuff at the airport.
Well, that's what they're going to be talking about at our public hearing, but this applies to the whole town, not just the airport. This mass gathering referendum question, if it passes, applies to anybody in town who's going to hold a public hearing.
So they had issues with the R O B O and.
Well, that's.
That's not us.
Not us.
At the end of the day, it's still a privately owned.
Airport.
Airport. We can't spot zone, we, you guys can't spot zone and say, oh, it's good for here, but not here.
Do you think that they think we're going to do that?